9:00 PM. For those joining us in person, please note that due to our hybrid environment, audio and video presentations can no longer be shared from the lectern. Requests to show an audio or video presentation during a council meeting should be directed to city.clark@mountainview.gov by 4:30 PM on the meeting date. Additionally, due to our hybrid environment, we will no longer have speakers line up to speak on any item. Anyone wishing to address the EPC in person must complete a yellow card, a yellow speaker card, sorry. Please write the name you wish to be called by when it is your turn to speak and the item number on which you wish to speak. Please complete one yellow speaker card for each item on which you wish to speak and turn them into the EPC clerk as soon as possible, but no later than the call for public comment on the item you are speaking on. Instructions for addressing the city council, oh, sorry, the commission virtually may be found on the posted agenda. Now I will ask the EPC clerk to proceed with roll call.
All commissioners are present?
Thank you. Now on to agenda, item three, 3.1. The Environmental Planning Commission meeting minutes of January 4th, 2023. We will, I'm going to ask if there are any discussion or comments on the minutes? I see none. Then we will open for a public comment. If anyone in attendance would like to provide comments on the minutes, please fill out a yellow speaker card and provide it to the EPC clerk. If anyone on Zoom would like to provide comment on the minutes, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves with star six. I will ask if there is a.
Motion? No one on Zoom, sorry. Apologies.
Thank you very much. So then I will open for motions.
I'll move approval of the meeting minutes.
Do I have a second? Thank you very much. A motion to approve the minutes by Commissioner Clark and a second from Commissioner Gutierrez. EPC clerk will conduct the vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we'll have item four, oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the EPC on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the commission from acting on non-agenda items. If anyone in attendance would like to provide comments on non-agenda items, please fill out a yellow speaker card and provide it to the EPC clerk. If anyone on Zoom would like to provide comment on non-agenda items, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves with star six. Is there any one on Zoom? Nope, thank you. No one from the public?
No one from the public.
Thank you very much. All right.
Excuse me, I think I see somebody.
Oh, you do?
Brittany?
My apologies, we do have one member of the public wishing to provide comments. Albert, I am going to go ahead and start a timer for you.
I believe he has three minutes.
That is correct.
Okay, Albert? Please go ahead.
Okay, Albert, you should be able to speak now.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Albert Lucia with the Northern California Public Union 45. And it's great to see that we have great projects coming to our city, but we often forget to think about the workforce that is not to build the projects in our community. I'm here to speak on the needle area level status implementation in our city economy, which includes healthcare, remote wage, apprenticeship, and local hire. It's important to have a living wage because it also working men or women is being able to validate their wages with the current inflation rate has skyrocketed in the last two years. And to be able to offer around the community and provide the basis for its family. So healthcare is a necessity for all humans. We cannot have our neighbors and members of the community seeking medical attention because their employers is not providing any healthcare benefits. And instead, they become a burden to our medical system. Apprenticeship programs. The apprenticeship program is a pathway for minorities, women, and at-risk youth into the construction industry. It gives the, it gives the working class citizens skills and apprenticeship to build any projects and also giving a shot to the American dream. By hiring locally, ensure that the citizens have not have more time to spend with their families and being involved in the community instead of spending time in the road trying to make ends meet. I would like to ask the community, under elected officials, what are we doing to ensure that we're protecting the workforce? Are we going to, are we going to implement a level standards in our city? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there are no more comments from the public, we'll now move to our public hearing, item 5.1, 1020 and 1040, Terabella Avenue Public Storage and Affordable Housing Projects. Do any commissioners wish to make disclosures such as contacts with the applicant or site visits?
I visited the site, or I had met with the applicant, but I've been to the site so many times, I did not visit it again this time.
Commissioner Haymeyer?
I visited the site and met with the applicant virtually.
Commissioner Dempsey, Vice Chair Dempsey?
I've met with the applicant and I have visited the site.
Commissioner Clark?
Both as well.
And I will also, did you have a request to speak?
I have many times gone to the site and unsuccessfully failed in my bid to meet with the developer, but I tried.
Anyone else? I will also disclose that I met with the applicants and have visited the site. Pardon me, sorry, Commissioner Gutierrez?
Oh, no problem. I have visited the site, but was unable to meet with the developer.
Thank you. So first we'll have a staff presentation by Edgar Maravilla, Senior Planner, and Rebecca Shapiro, Deputy Zoning Administrator. Then questions by the EPC, followed by public comment. And at the closure of public comment, the commission will deliberate and take action. Mr. Maravilla, would you go ahead and begin the presentation? Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, planning commissioners, and members of the public. My name is Edgar Maravilla, Senior Planner with the City of Mountain View. I'm here with Deputy Zoning Administrator Rebecca Shapiro and Long Range Planning Manager Eric Anderson. Today's presentation is for two separate but connected projects at 1020 and 1040 Terabella Avenue. Respectively, the proposed affordable housing development and personal storage project being presented tonight require both development permits and legislative land use changes through a joint Gatekeeper application authorized by City Council in August of 2020. The existing project parcels are in the Terabella area with project frontages on San Rafael Avenue, Terabella Avenue, and Linda Vista Avenue. The site is immediately surrounded primarily by several existing industrial uses, offices, and research and development uses. Down the street to the west of the project site is a recently approved and under construction mixed-use multifamily project at 1001 North Shoreline. If entitled, a lot on adjustment will be processed separately to reconfigure the project parcels as shown, which include a land swap and a half an acre land donation from public storage to Alta Housing, allowing for more affordable units to be constructed on the Alta Housing site versus their original parcel. As proposed, the public storage site at 1040 Terabella would be located directly adjacent to Highway 101 and the Alta Housing Affordable Housing Project Site at 1020 Terabella, Fronton Terabella Avenue and San Rafael Avenue. Additionally, you will note the affordable housing site would be buffered from Highway 101 by the reconfigured public storage site and project. The land transfer would increase the size of the affordable housing site from about 26,600 square feet to 45,000 square feet, which is about a net gain of 24,500 square feet, allowing again for more units to be constructed on the affordable housing site. Both projects have gone through several meetings, including applicant-hosted community meetings, two development review committee meetings, and review by the Santa Clara County Airport Land Use Commission. In addition to the project scope under review by EPC tonight, the public storage project includes a proposed 10-year development agreement, which will help facilitate development of their sites by way of a two-phase approach. A recommendation on the development agreement is not within the EPC purview, and the DA will be reviewed and a recommendation made by the zoning administrator later this month. EPC's recommendation tonight, along with the development agreement recommendation by the zoning administrator, will be forwarded to City Council to be discussed at tentatively scheduled public hearing on March 14, 2023. Both sites have an existing general plan designation of general industrial and a zoning designation of MM general industrial, which do not allow residential uses or industrial developments at the intensity proposed by public storage. To allow the proposed affordable housing project at 1020 Terabella, the applicants requesting a general plan map amendment to high density residential. To allow the proposed personal storage building at 1040 Terabella, the applicants requesting a general plan tax amendment to allow an increase to FAR in the general industrial designation for development up to 2.5 FAR. Both projects are requesting a zoning map amendment to P Plan Community District. Staff has reviewed the proposals and recommends approval as discussed in more detail within the staff report. The project at 1020 Terabella is a 100% affordable housing project proposing 108 units on a one-acre site within, with one six-story building. Along with the land use change, the project requires approval of a planned community and development review permit. And staff has also analyzed the project by way of an initial study pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Project parking is accommodated in a two-level above podium garage accessible via one driveway from Terabella Avenue and with a second driveway and ramp to the second parking access off San Rafael Avenue. Some of the project amenity areas include an entry plaza with seating, interactive installation, and other gathering amenities shown in blue, a secure bicycle parking and repair room facility, fronting Terabella shown in orange, a third-floor podium courtyard fronting Terabella with a variety of features such as a children's play area shown in yellow, and an indoor/outdoor community room shown in purple, among other amenities. The project also includes off-site sidewalk upgrades, replacing the existing five-feet monolithic sidewalk on Terabella Avenue with a seven-foot detached sidewalk with a five-foot wide continuous landscape strip with nine street trees. The project would also replace the existing five-foot monolithic sidewalk on San Rafael Avenue with a five-foot detached sidewalk with five-feet landscape strip with two street trees. The public improvements will be enhanced by additional streetscape amenities areas proposed onsite primarily along the Terabella frontage. Overall, the building designs a simple, modern design with a mix of three primary materials, cement panels, board form concrete, and metal vertical siding. Decorative metal awnings and steel trellises are also proposed in limited locations. Ground floor units also have porch entries facing Terabella Avenue. The updated color palette is primarily warm earth tone of almond tan and brown with a bright copper color proposed for awning in the main building entrance. The project design has evolved from the original Gatekeeper hearing. Based on council and EPC study session input, DRC and staff review, based on final DRC input, staff is recommending approval with minor design conditions, which is to finalize the color palette for building, work on color transition, finalize window detail, and ensure landscape design for all frontages complement the building and provide for a high-quality pedestrian environment. Overall, the project is compliant with the project-specific P District standards, which take influence from the East Wisman Precise Plan and the provisions of the state entity bonus law. The high-density residential general plan designation allows 80 units per acre and 84 units per the parcel size. The project is proposing 108 units with the 24 additional units allowed through a 29% state density bonus. Per the state density bonus law, the project qualifies for four incentives and concessions and unlimited waivers. The project request includes a proposed concession to reduce parking requirements. The project would provide approximately 0.9 of a parking space per unit totaling 96 total spaces, which is nine fewer spaces than recommended by the city's parking study. The reduced parking would result in actual cost saving for the project and must be approved pursuant to the state density bonus law. Public Storage is proposing to redevelop their existing personal storage site, replace 18, replacing 18 existing traditional single-story storage buildings with two multi-story buildings. Building one is six stories tall and building two would be four stories. Public Storage proposes to construct the project in two phases, with the taller building, building one, constructed first. The project site would be 3.8 acres after the land donation to the affordable housing site. Parking is provided aggregate inaccessible via both Linda Vista and San Rafael Avenue. Building one contains the future onsite business office and is oriented towards Linda Vista Avenue. Building two faces San Rafael. Currently, the property has zero onsite trees and is proposing to plant 81 new trees. Existing trees will be removed along Linda Vista to construct public improvement, and these are street trees. And new street trees will be planted on both project frontages. The existing storage buildings will be removed to construct the project. However, because of the two-phase building approach, some existing storage buildings will remain in use on the property until public storage proceeds with construction of building two and a temporary operation office will be placed in the building two area. Overall, the design to modern building with flat roofs proposing strong vertical and horizontal trim bands around both buildings. Other building materials include clear and spandrel glass, concrete cement, wall material, stucco, and metal panels. Staff and DRC worked with the applicant since early study sessions to incorporate a mural on building one along Linda Vista Avenue, enhance landscape and tree canopy, and tweak the design to fit into the area and address other early design feedback. Based on DRC input, staff is recommending approval of the project with minor design conditions. As proposed, the project is substantially compliant with the existing standards of the MM zone on which the proposed P District standards are modeled. The proposed P District standard for the project include minor changes to the front setback on Linda Vista, allowing 18 feet in lieu of the MM district standards of 25 feet, facilitating the proposed building height pursuant to allow general plan FAR and allow the proposed 66 parking spaces in lieu of the 209 spaces required by the zoning ordinance. It is important to note the proposed parking includes 37 more spaces recommend, more spaces than recommended by the city's parking study. With that said, here's the formal recommendation as shown on the staff report that the Environmental Planning Commission recommend the city council approve the proposed project. That this concludes staff's presentation. The environmental consultant from David J. Powers and the project architect from Van Meter William Pollock and War Malcolm are available via Zoom to help answer questions. The project applicants are also here tonight and have a joint presentation.
Thank you very much. Can we have the applicant presenter, please? Good question. There you go. I see the red light.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. My name is Andres Friedman, and I'm Senior Vice President of Development for Public Storage. It's nice seeing you. I met some of you probably seven years ago when I was first here. Very proud of this project and where it's been. It's dear to my heart. And it's incredible the architecture we've been able to accomplish with the help of staff and and doubtful partnership without the housing, we wouldn't be here. So, thank you. I'll be brief. I think I spoke with some of you and staff did an incredible job in their presentation. I couldn't do it as good as they. So I'll, I'll just run quickly through the presentation, if you don't mind, next slide, please. If you've seen, know what Public Storage currently owns in Alta Housing through negotiations, conversation, and creative thinking, we came up with the next plan, please, to provide Alta Housing a more predominant location along Terabella, next slide, please. And provide about half an acre to allow them to increase the number of affordable housing units and put ourselves in the back, which also another benefit is that we're creating a buffer to the freeway. And of course, by doing that, we're allowing, you know, a much more meaningful residential project to take, you know, stronger presence at Terabella. Next slide. This is the, the site plan, the staff share with you a little bit. Building one is where we're planning to start when we move forward with the six-story building. And building two is in front of it is where the Alta Housing component will go. And that one will come on a later date after we deliver and stabilize phase one. If this, new buildings are state-of-the-art, all climate control, all inside lookings are quieter than what we currently have there. We've been part of the community for about 40 years. So it's no doubtful that this is, you know, a project overdue to provide good services to the community. Next slide. And this is where we started at Gatekeeper. So as you can see, we've come a long way. This is, even though that is a little bit out of the box thinking for us, believe it or not, it's still a little bit of prototypical elements of our buildings. But if we go to the next one, through significant effort and study sessions throughout the last couple of years, and I won't enumerate the, all the feedback, but it was a lot of feedback, good direction. We come up, next slide, please, with the following elevations with a lot more articulation, a lot more materials, a lot more interesting architecture. We incorporated the RP's that we, it's work in progress. That's just a placeholder. We still need to develop what we want. But this is building one, phase one, which is a six-story building. Next slide. This is a view. You've seen it in the previous presentation from Linda Vista. Next slide. This is a different view from the freeway overpass as you come out, what you will see. And the other one is as you're from a pedestrian point of view, if you walk to the right from that rendering is on the left side, you will find eventually the Alta Housing project while you go into the cul-de-sac. In the back is where our building stands. Next slide is a rendering elevations from building phase two. Similar in style, in smaller scale, only four stories, and it was done purposely to give stronger presence to the residential, which is right behind us. Next, a slide, please. And this is a depiction of how the correlation between our building four-story and the Alta Housing, which is the white building to the left, will be standing. Smaller footprint, lower height, that allows the residential to take a little precedence for the residents and the views and setbacks. Next slide. And it was mentioned, I think, one of the most important elements on our design efforts was the landscape component. We currently have six trees and not even in our property outside, so we work with staff. And I think so far, been able to allocate 81 trees in the property, which went fully mature, will provide about 40% canopy. Half of them will be native to California as, as discussed. So the next site plan, which you've seen from the previous presentation, is how we're planning on executing the landscape and where it's going to go. And, and an important element is the setback between building two and the affordable housing component. Between the two buildings, there's about 20 feet. So apart from having an interesting architecture in the background, there will be trees and landscape that will buffer and create a little bit of environment for the residential. So that's a quick snapshot. You've seen it. Happy to answer any questions before I turn it to Alta Housing, or we can wait for their presentation and then I can answer questions.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and have the next presenter present. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Carlos Castellanos, Vice President, Real Estate Development at Alta Housing. And I'm also joined here today with, by Randy Suda, our CEO. And we have our project management team also available for questions on Zoom. And as was mentioned before, Van Meter Williams and Pollock are also on the call as well for questions. Moving to the next slide, just wanted to mention here that, that we, when we came to this body last year, we were in, in a situation where we were trying to time the approvals so that we could make it to this year's state financing application. And we work very closely with the, with the staff team. And we've been able to stay to that schedule through a lot of back and forth and, and coordinating. We're now on track, hopefully, to, to, the application will come out in April, and we will be hopefully having our entitlement approve it at that point, making it possible for us to continue moving ahead and, and make the application timing that we had anticipated last year. Moving on to the next slide. Just a quick overview, how we, how we came to first, you had this idea of, of at the Gatekeeper session, and now we're at this current proposal here. I'll go to the next slide to talk a little bit more about the, what has, next slide, please, to talk a little bit more about how since EPC, what we've worked with closely on, with the, the staff. We've really worked on massing and colors and then also putting a lot of emphasis on the, the pedestrian experience on the ground floor. And so going to the next slide. Briefly here to talk about how the massing, what we've done is we, we looked at the two bookends and, and created articulation there a little, and then changed the coloring on, on those bookends. And then the, the middle bar where we, where we set back that part of the building. We also were being conscious and the staff was working with us to try and limit the, the cost impact of, of, of the comments and suggestions. And I think we, we've come to a good place where we have some articulation and some color changes to really make, to break up the, the masses there. Next slide, please. And I, also, we really focused with staff on, on looking at how to make the, the ground floor space interactive. And for example, on the lower right-hand there, we have the, the, the corner plaza. And we opened it up and so that we could have interactive, not just have passive seating, but also have interactive abilities there. We have the stencil on the ground floor where we, the, the, the public or the person would be able to stand there and, and act as a sundial, so they'd be able to even tell what time it was. And we haven't, anticipating of putting some public art, which we haven't worked right now, it's shown on the corner there where the, the Terabella sign is, that we could complement that, those interactive uses there with some, some art that might be able to also talk a little bit about the, the seasons and the, and the solar, that the, how the earth orbits around the sun. We, we had to work on that. And then you also see on the upper right-hand where we have the bike facility there, and we have exterior public bike parking there so that we can have the opportunities where there could be a bike event, bike rides that, that involve the community as well as the, the residents there. And then lastly, on the left there, we have the, 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 further down the street, we have the stoops there where we have the residents living, almost like a front yard where it's nicely landscaped. There's actually descriptive placards there for the, for, talking about the landscaping, but also giving the buffer to the residents where they can sit outside and, and still interact with the street but not be right onto the street. Next slide. And then also the other open space for the residents up on, you've seen some of these images on, on the, the city's, the staff's report here too, looking at how we zone the, the courtyard so that there's active and passive spaces. And there's also celebratory and on the right-hand corner there where you can see that we have a garage door opener kind of condition there where we can have the, the, the community room spill out into the courtyard and create this open airy and, and sunlit area where you can have a good event for, for people and just have opportunities for people to interact and exchange. And that's it for my presentation and we're open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Gutierrez?
Sure, thank you. So I have a question first for public housing, or I'm sorry, public storage. Andres?
Yes.
Yes, nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you.
It's a quick question. It's a quick question. In terms of access to your facilities, will that be something that has a gated community aspect to it, whether it's secure entering way to the storage spaces and then a public access point to go into an office for rental? Or how do you have that planned?
Yeah, usually, and maybe if we go to the site plan, if you don't mind, I can explain it. But basically what we have is, you're correct. I mean, the first section of where the office will be located, which is mostly fronting Linda Vista. The office will be there and will have parking for customers who are looking to rent space. And then there will be a gate. There will be code that you will punch in, in order to get into the gate and into the different lobbies that you will need to access the buildings. And depending on what we decide to do, those lobbies may have another code to go into different floors. So customers can only access. So it's a secure level by level facility. So yeah, I mean, I don't have a pointer, but if you see a building, anybody has a pointer, I can walk you through, but you were in the right site plan. I think that I can use that one. So on your screens, if you see building one and you drive, I don't know if you have it on your screens, but if you drive Linda Vista and at the end of the cul-de-sac, you make a right, you see about eight, nine spaces there. All those are for customers trying to lease space. So they will park, go into the office. And then there will be a gate right after that where customers will stop and there will be a keypad where people will put it in. These days we have an app. Actually, we've gone real fast. And if you have an app in your customer, you can just open and close with your keypad. Actually, these days with the pandemic accelerated our adoption of technology and sixty percent of our customers rent online and don't even stop at the office anymore. And they go straight to their units. So that's how we secure and all the customers will come through that gate. The gate we anticipate the way at the back of building two will be more for fire exit. And everybody will come in and out of the main entrance for the project unless, you know, through lease up, we may need the other to exit to allow for flow of people. But once the projects are leased, you probably just single access.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
And then I have a question for the housing plan. Hello?
Hi.
For the third floor podium, I, I like the design. It's very family friendly. I appreciate that. So I have two quick questions, maybe three at most. So in terms of the trees themselves, the trees that you have in mind to plant around that area, are those trees that are going to be limited in growth? Or are they trees that can potentially grow in time height wise?
I, I will answer, and I don't know if, if, if any of our architects can also help answer this. I think they would grow over time, but I don't know how large they would get. Yes. You're talking of the ones on the courtyard.
Right.
Not the ones on the ground.
Exactly. Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
Because my, and my question for that was just because trying to think this through over time, I'm trying to envision how that would also incorporate itself into the lay of the land, right? So. And then the other question I have is in terms of the center space, I see green there. So I'm thinking that that's going to be grass? Or are you all going to use artificial turf? Or what's your plan for that green space in the middle?
We would be, I'm pretty sure that's all live and it'd be, you know, soil and, and plants or some kind of planting or, or grass or some, yeah, would not be artificial.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's perfect. And then in terms of the shading space, those structures there. Are you planning to also have that? Is that, is that structure going to be like somewhat covered? Or do you plan to have eventually like with the area or something like that planted on that to provide even more relief?
I'm trying to remember right now that this is the, you're referring to the trellises that are on that, on that courtyard.
Right.
I don't remember if we had any, but there, there may be some plantings there, but I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, friendly suggestion. If you could add, if it's something that's light and airy and open, that's great. But if there's even more shade, that's even better.
Yes.
And if you can incorporate some sort of nature aspect to it, like what was suggested.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Well, thanks.
Commissioner Clark?
All right. I think this is probably for staff. Were there any, the staff report mentioned that the, some of the DRC comments were being incorporated. Do we anticipate any? Were there any red flags there in terms of things that might, that they're struggling to incorporate? Or are we pretty confident that they'll be able to incorporate elements that respond to most of those comments?
I can take that one. I can't speak for the applicants, obviously. They may have a slightly different answer, but we, we're, we're pretty confident. We've had extensive conversations around design with both of the applicant teams and it's been a good collaborative process and we're confident that those, the projects actually already show much of what we're trying to accomplish. And it's, it's really about minor refinement from this point forward.
What I figure. Thank you.
Commissioner Nunez?
Thank you, Chair. A quick question. I think Mr. Maravilla, right? Did you mention that the development agreement was not within the scope of our discussion today? Or, and nobody caught that correctly?
That is correct. That was mentioned during the presentation. We're yet to finalize the settlement agreement. We're very close to finalizing it and it would make its way to the zoning administrator and there would be a public hearing available if people wanted to tune in.
Okay, that, that's all right. I guess in, in general, then I, I do just have some questions. I believe for the gentleman from Alta Housing, I think he had in that slide that you had prepared. I think it said that the planned timeline was to begin construction in twenty twenty-four, right? You can come up.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then just question about the development agreement in terms of like the ten years. I'm sure, you know, you and Public Storage partnered in kind of coming to, so I'm not even trying to like, you know, mess with that in any way. But I, I am kind of curious just around, but if you could just kind of explain or, or provide some, you know, detail around the length of the development agreement. You know, why ten years, what, you know, a five year, like wasn't just your standard, just ten years seems like a long time. And so if you could kind of like provide some detail into that length of time and the need for that, that would be really helpful.
I would like to just clarify that the development agreement is that Alta Housing is not party to that development agreement. It's between the city and Public Storage. And that we've also been working closely with Public Storage and that we, we are, we have our own agreement that, that will be dictating and, and governing the timing of the, of the, of our parcel to be built. And, and we're working very closely and, and in very much cooperating together. We, we, so I could turn it over to Andres. I don't know if there's anything more that you'd like to know.
I, I guess I might ask Mr. Andres around some of the phasing. Just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, is it the case that the Alta Housing portion or like what sequence of events would be constructed first? Essentially, like would the public storage portion have to come first before Alta Housing can break ground? Or, you know, what's? Yeah. What's that ten year?
Sure.
Window?
So the way I will answer, which is probably the most important part is there's nothing on the development agreement that will hold me to deliver the piece of land that Alta Housing needs to move. So if they move faster than I can, they will have the piece of land at the time they need it to move. And that's the most significant. The development agreement, it's more for us to have the optionality on wanting to build based on where the economic environment is today and how fast it moves. We have a significant development in front of us and we don't know when we can build phase two. So we want to have the optionality of building first one, stabilizing so we can go to phase two. That said, regardless of my timing, the delivery of the land that they need, I will abandon and it's a swap of land as well, because it's not just a donation of my land, but the configuration changes. I take the back, they take the front. So, but that will be timely in the agreement that we have. So they have very specific requirements for their funding and when they need to receive it. And it's that point where we're going to be delivering it and we have no problem whatsoever.
All right. Sounds good. So it sounds like there's no dependency on what Alta Housing can do versus what Public Storage does and when they do it.
Correct. There won't be.
Okay, that, that makes sense. And then one more question. This might be to staff first and then to, you know, the developers, but the environmental review, there's a portion there that mentions something about lead, aerially deposited lead. Obviously that part of the city has a substantial history around contaminants. And so I, maybe I'm not reading this or understand this correctly, but my question is, it seems like the Department of Toxic Substance Control said that we needed to include language around the ADL and then if I might be missing it, but what's the like remediation or what's the like mitigating control here? Is it just like we notice? Is the extent of this, hey, we're noticing everyone that there might be aerially deposited lead and that's it? Or is there some action we're supposed to take against that?
I, I can fill in and Edgar, please jump in if I'm missing a key point. The, the input from DTSC has to do with the project site proximity to Highway one oh one and it took a very long time for this country to ban lead in, in fuel. So the, the feedback is really meant to address a potential post entitlement additional analysis for any soil contamination by lead that is aerially deposited. And that would be worked through, as I said, post entitlement through remediation efforts overseen by an outside agency.
Okay, so it doesn't seem, or it doesn't sound like it's relating to the construction itself, but rather the cars that are driving by.
Yeah, or, or who drove about, drove by about fifty years ago, thirty to fifty years ago. But, but yeah, it's about, it's about I guess aerosolizer, leather got into the air from the burning of fuels and vehicles along the highway and then deposited in nearby ground.
Okay, sounds good. And so then last two questions here then, with regards to, you know, particulates or other such matter that is arising from the construction work itself. Again, sorry if I missed it, but to what extent was their findings relating to that being impactful to people living in the surrounding area?
A great question. I believe this would be a better question answered by our consultants. They, they are available on Zoom. And we can call on them as far as the environmental consultants, but from, from the analysis, they didn't analyze noise and dust. And as you could submit for building permits, the building division does have further requirements that they have to demonstrate that their construction and the detail of that construction in the city has a standard condition of approval that we have included on the project to ensure such as limited hours of construction amongst other, other conditions.
Okay, cool. And so then I guess parlaying that to whoever's breaking ground here, I guess both Public Storage and Alta Housing. Yeah, I, it would just be nice to know. So I grew up somewhere that had like a battery plant, like a mile or two away, X side in, in Los Angeles. And, you know, I didn't know that. There was a bunch of like particulates running down me. And so I feel a little, you know, it would just be nice to know that, you know, if there is some kind of outreach or, you know, even if it's like providing like, I don't know, N ninety-fives or air filters, something like that to people living in the area, because it is an industrial area. It is up by, you know, like a historically militarized and all the things that come with that part of the city. And so, you know, when you kick up a lot of soot and such, you know, it would just be nice to know that there's some proactivity as opposed to like minimally viable. So that's, yeah, those are my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Cranston?
Question. My question is actually for staff. It's the note that I sent in earlier on Exhibit Two and the Amendment to the General Plan. I get the change that's in there, but the thing that I noticed was that in, on, in the Amendment to the General Plan, back page eighty-three, the next item, so you're allowing for more density for public storage, but it says, guideline says up to three stories. And building one is six stories and building two is four stories. Does the, that kind of qualification of with significant additional public benefits language that's part of the, what's in red need to be added to the building height item? Or how does that work?
So the, the general plan characterizes height as a, as a guideline and provides direction to circumstances and mechanisms for allowing different height standards and a precise plan in achievement of other community goals and, and things like that. So for the public storage project, the P district standards provide for that additional height to construct the project. And overall, the projects together and the land donation certainly go a long ways to advancing some key goals of the city. So staff found that you know, what we have in front of you tonight is both sound as far as process and sort of meets, meets the objectives as defined therein.
You didn't feel that needed to be?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I had a quick question for our friends at Alta. And so I'm, I'm going to ask a question. I think I already know the answer to, but I think other folks might be interested in the, in the answer as well. So and it pertains to displacement. Alta, I think to their eternal credit operates a small, safe parking space there for some of the RVs. You've done that for a while. When this project gets built, obviously that's going to have to change. And so my understanding is that you, you've already thought about this. And if you could just tell us a little bit about what your displacement plan will be once construction starts and those, those residents are going to have to move.
Yeah, our plan at this point is to work cooperatively with the city and with Move Mount View, the operators of that safe parking lot. So roughly six months in advance of when we anticipate starting construction, we'll start that outreach process. Let the residents know that they, that the lot will be closing and then work cooperatively with the Move Mount View and the city to try and relocate them to some, one of the city's other safe parking lots.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any more questions from the commission? Okay, well, we will then begin public comment. If EPC Clerk wouldn't mind noting public speakers who want to come and speak or those who are in person.
I do see one virtual public speaker that wishes to speak. And my understanding is that the speaker has a presentation. So staff can go ahead and screen share the presentation. This is for Albert. And I think we will need to, Albert, I don't believe we will be able to show the timer to you. So we can play the timer in the chambers and keep time. So let me get the timer set up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can go ahead and start talking.
Great. I'll start my timer here. Hi, this is Albert Jeans. I live pretty close to this development in Sterling Estates. And I've watched this development come on for several years and I'm really happy with the way it turned out. You know, kudos to both of the applicants. And I think they did a really great job. But I think now the city has a lot of homework to do to make sure this becomes successful. Next slide, please. Yeah, you can keep going. I mean, that's, I just took this this morning, that picture up there. What really stood out for me, first of all, is the power lines. I mean, one thousand one hundred North Shoreline undergrounded their utilities. And I'm not sure why this wasn't done here, especially since the residential project. There aren't too many residential projects with, you know, blatant high tension power lines going down the sidewalk. You know, both of the applicants made a big deal out of how they want the streetscape to look really nice in front of this building. And I think removing those power lines would go a long ways towards achieving that. I mean, they're just really ugly. If you remember what they looked like in the previous picture. Next slide, please. And speaking of the streetscape, the problem is, you know, Terabella is more than forty feet wide. And so oversized vehicles are allowed to park there. And I'm not sure you know, what the city is planning to do regarding that for the next several years. But this is what it looks like now. And that's going to totally sabotage any kind of streetscape you want to create in front of the buildings, because nobody's going to want to sit out here with these RVs parked there. I walked down the street this morning. It was not pleasant. I mean, there's trash out there, but it smells. You know, it's just totally, and you don't have any visibility to the street. And so there's a security problem there too. Next slide, please. And this is an industrial area. Oh, this is just another example. Yeah. Next slide, please. This is an industrial area. There's a lot of street parking, you know, for people doing business, trucks and all that. So it's, and it's, I'm glad they made the sidewalk in front of their place seven feet wide. I would hope that the city could extend that all the way to shoreline. Next slide, please. And you even have this company there that, you know, I think their project is to automate, you know, And you even have this company there that, you know, I think their project is to automate, you know, semis, but they have, you have these big trucks pulling in and out. And so this is not a great environment for children, families to be walking around on. So I actually walked from the site to the Safeway store. It's two thirds of a mile. It takes about fifteen minutes. Next slide, please. But it's not a pleasant experience at all. You know, after you got off Terabella, you have to go on shoreline. You know, shoreline is one of the busiest streets in Mountain View. You have exhaust, you have noise. It was not a pleasant experience. Even though it's fifteen minutes, it was a very, you know, sort of, you always have to be on your guard, watch out for cars, all that kind of stuff. So next slide, please. And so I think the city really needs to step up and upgrade the area to make it really a nice residential area so that people would want to.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Jeans. I'm going to have to cut you off due to time. Thank you.
We have no additional speakers.
Okay, thank you. I'm now going to open up to EPC deliberation. Commissioners, if anyone would like to discuss, I'm sorry.
If I could just remind the commission to try to speak directly into the microphones, you know, looking away doesn't really help the people on Zoom or YouTube to hear.
Thank you. So I will open up deliberations. Commissioner Nunes.
I don't know that I had a request to speak, but I guess I will go ahead and speak. I'm going to ask, just because I did find that minorly compelling for different reasons. But is there a reason, I guess, for the gentleman from Alta Public Storage? Is there a reason that the power lines were not undergrounded? Was it cost? What's the, what's the thinking behind that?
Yes, my understanding is that that we had that conversation and it's because of cost that that we we are undergrounding the ones on Terabella because those are really close to the building, but we have that wider setback. And so we we talked to the city about that and maybe.
Just a quick clarification, they're undergrounding on San Rafael, which is the the shorter frontage, but not on on Terabella.
Excellent. Well, then I'll I'll just go ahead and move forward with comments. You know, when this project came before us in March, I was extremely supportive then. Think I had minimal comments because there's really not much to say in terms of how much of a benefit I think this project is. It's a public, private, or like, you know, affordable housing developer, private industry partnership. It is using a land swap that, you know, can serve as a model for, you know, future such projects. It is a desperately needed resource in our community. And so I'm I'm very much just looking forward to voting in support of this project. So yeah, not much more to say.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I think the request to speak order may not be working, so I'm just going to look around. Commissioner Cranston.
So I I agree. I think this it's a good project. I think some of the changes were made. Do make it visually more interesting. I had the same question that Commissioner Union has needs had about the development agreement. So I appreciate you bringing that up again. One of the questions that I asked in the in the one in my meeting with the applicant was how the feedback from council on on both timing and and design work went. And the response then was more enthusiastic. And I really want to thank Edward and and the and the staff of making sure that this stayed on track, that we're in line with things. They were very positive that you, you know, that kind of was you worked your butt off to help make this happen and and that's, that's what we wanted. I think the timeline here, having something going into construction next year will be great. So I will be supporting the project and thank you to staff for helping to make this, keep this moving ahead. Thanks.
Do you want to just raise hands because I cannot tell? Commissioner Haymeyer.
And thank you. I'd just like to echo my support for this project. I'm I'm so excited. It's been years in the making and it's just a phenomenal partnership between Alta Housing and Public Storage. And I met with the applicant earlier today and I, Public Storage said this was going to be the most beautiful facility in their inventory. And and I think there are a lot of ways that you could build storage on a highway. And it's exciting that this will be an inviting place for for people to see from the highway while they're coming through Mountain View. But more importantly, just the collaboration and thoughtfulness that really went into the land swap. My only recommendation is that we try and move this forward to align with state state funding. So please let's not delay tonight so that this can come to fruition as soon as possible, but great project, excited to support it.
Any other discussion items, Commission? Oh, it's working. Okay. Commissioner Gutierrez.
Thank you, Chair. So I wanted to echo, well, no, I don't want to echo everything that's been said and repeat it again because it's been well said by my fellow comrades here on the on the EPC board. But what I did want to highlight is in these times where we're facing COVID and economic uncertainty in general, it's a pleasure to see two working entities from opposite directions of the business life and come together to try and figure something out. And as I was mentioned by Commissioner Unies, if we can have this be an example for the rest of the community, not just in Mountain View, but for the Bay Area in general, to look at this and to see this as these entities from polar opposites can exist together and work together to build something beneficial for profit and nonprofit at the same time. And I want to thank you for hanging in there with all these outside circumstances and working together to then present something like this to the city of Mountain View. Because I think it's a big, huge step for everyone else to take notice of and understand that you may not be a tech giant, but you make just a huge impact by having something like this happen in a city like ours. So thank you.
Commissioner Dempsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think my colleagues have said all the the bright and shiny things that I wanted to say. This this project makes me happy. It makes me happy because it was a creative collaboration between public and private. And we always say we want to see that. And here we did. I I really want to commend Public Storage for being creative, for being collaborative, for making that gift to Alta Housing to double the amount of of, you know, two and three bedroom affordable units that we can put out into the community. That's a big deal. That's a huge deal. And so you really just, you deserve a lot of credit and praise, I think, for the way you've approached this and the sort of kindness you've approached it with. I would also say I think the city deserves a lot of credit. I don't know if I'm even allowed to say that. But, you know, the city ponied up a lot of money to help make this happen. And I would add, you know, it's my understanding the city, city staff have been very gracious in their efforts to work with you to try to keep the cost down so that we can have the maximum number of units in that building. And I think that's fantastic. So everybody that's been involved in this, Alta, Public Storage, even the city, this really is for me a case study of how it ought to be. And I think my colleague said this earlier. We wish there were more projects like this because you you really knocked it out of the park. So I'm going to happily support it tonight.
Thank you. Anymore? Commissioner.
Clerk.
I'll just say this has come such a long way from when it was a gatekeeper. And I I want I want to commend you for that. But I I also want to highlight how much I appreciate that it's gotten to this point. Having come from both a gatekeeper and an unusual partnership. So gatekeepers are really, one, I'm glad we took our chance on this because gatekeepers are risky. They sometimes they work out. A lot of times they they don't. They get stuck in the process or they fall off the map. And in this case, not only did a gatekeeper with an affordable subsidized housing component make it all the way through, but we were also able to to take the risk and and help fund it from a city perspective. And we're getting probably one of the most unique, if not the most unique, public storage building in in your portfolio. Well, we'll see how many, how many others demand the same later on, I'm sure. But I I'm just, I I'm really excited that we got to the point of moving this forward. I think the I I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge, I think, the the most significant session here is is the parking. But I think, I think, you know, which which is somewhat concerning, but I think overall it's it's a risk, another risk that I think we're we're willing to take and and hopefully it all works out and I'm sure it will. But anyway, congratulations for getting to this point and for and thank you to staff for help keeping it all on time so that we can get this funded and 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 move everything forward. And I'm happy after the chair speaks, I'm happy to to make the motion if there's an agreement.
Thank you. I will not belabor the praise, but I will again just do one big thank you for the really genuine collaboration of all parties involved. And just make one additional note that I do appreciate everyone involved in trying to get the ground floor, the the relationship between the the public and the users to be as nice as possible. If you can do it, everyone can. So for all the above reasons that everyone has stated, I too will also be supporting the project. Given that, I think we are ready to take a motion.
Okay, I will. First, I also just very quickly want to note, there aren't a lot of projects that go from, I know it's just one site, but zero percent canopy to forty percent canopy in fifteen years. That's that's pretty amazing. I know it's just an empty lot basically, but still, still pretty good. Sandra, since this is just a recommendation, can I can I just move the staff recommendations printed in the staff report or do I need to read?
Yes, Commissioner Clark.
Right, I will move the staff recommendation as as printed in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Several seconds. Okay. Can we go ahead and please take the vote?
Motion carries unanimously.
Yay, thank you very much. Now, we will go on to Item Six, Commission Staff Announcements, Updates, Requests, and Committee Reports. No action will be taken on any questions raised by the Commission at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Couple of announcements. Let me take my own advice here and speak into the microphone. Put my computer in front of me so I can still look at it. So big news from earlier this week, the council appointed Emily An Ramos to the City Council. And so that's, you probably recognize her as a frequent public speaker. The council also approved, this was from a week ago, the council approved the rezonings and general plan amendments that this commission recommended back in December related to affordable housing projects on Evelyn Avenue and Mindevista Avenue as well as El Comino Real Precise Plan and General Plan Village Centers. I have a quick update on the housing element. Of course, we did receive our letter from HCD as expected. That was a couple of weeks ago. Since then, we've been doing some diligent outreach and analysis to address those comments. And we're still working to bring a final draft to EPC for adoption in the next couple of months. A big, coming up in March, we, there is the Planning Commissioners Academy. That's something that we like to send commissioners to every year. So if you have an interest in attending, I believe it's down in Orange County this year. But if you have an interest in attending, you can send me an email. Let me know if you want to go. That's in the last week in March. We don't have an item for two weeks from today, February fifteenth, but we will have an item on March first, the General Plan and Housing Element Annual Reports that we have to do. And then we are looking at potentially, nothing certain yet, but potentially scheduling a special meeting on March twenty second. We had to not adopt a meeting in early April because of the Passover holiday. So we are, because we have a few projects that are coming through the pipeline, we may need to schedule a special meeting on March twenty second. So more information to come on that. Just wanted to maybe give you a heads up to keep your calendars free.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes, I'd like to friendly reminder to the team about the proposal for having a retreat so that we can follow through with that and find some time for that. And I thought to just bring this up so that we wouldn't forget since we just came back from the holidays and I'm still trying to adjust. Thank you.
Heard and planning.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I think commissioners. All right then, thank you very much, everyone. The meeting is adjourned. It is six fifty five. Thank you. The regular, sorry, the next regularly scheduled EPC meeting will be held on March first, twenty twenty three. Good evening. Oh, eight oh seven. Oh, I'm looking at the clock. Sorry. Eight oh seven, correction. Six fifty five, we did go back in time.